Very good.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of McCandless meeting of the Town Council for June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. If you please write for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mister Singer couldn't be here this evening, but he is on video and so I'm vice president, so I'll be filling in for the day. As a reminder, we have, we did have an executive session after our last council meeting to discuss personnel matters. I'd like to start with some announcements. The town is currently accepting applications for the role of town manager. Detailed information, application instruction can be found on the town website. With that, I'd also like to offer my sincere gratitude to Mister O'Malley for his steadfast leadership and heartfelt concern and work here in the town, and I'd like to read him a proclamation. You want to go out front?
Sure.
We do it up here.
Are you painting us or taking too cheap?
Win friends and influence people, Mister President.
Proclamation, recognizing town manager Brian O'Malley, there's dedicated public service to the town of McCandless. Whereas Brian O'Malley was appointed town manager on August twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas Brian was instrumental in the town obtaining ninety thousand dollars in green lease trails and recreational program grant funds. He became a master parcel trail plan, hundred forty-two thousand dollars in multi-modal transportation funds for the sidewalk and bill and Americans with disability act grants for the North Mountain Drive area. And one point six million in green light go grants to update six traffic signal intersections in the town. With additional grant applications waiting for afterwards. And whereas during the tenure, he was influential in the town's technology upgrades, promoting community transparency engagement. Route the town website overhaul as well as staff efficiencies with the Tracer R and A D B implementations. And whereas under Brian's leadership with assistance from the town staff and supported the town council, the count town completed a one point five million dollar Blazer Culver retrofit. The three hundred eighty-three thousand dollar Walpark baseball facility renovations. The six hundred and seventy thousand dollar town hall HVAC replacement and the four hundred and six thousand dollar Perry Highway sidewalk project. And whereas Brian was focused, has focused his efforts on government collaboration and order to strengthen our community and improve relationship. He has represented McCandless professionally and with the Northern Regional Council of Government currently serving as chairperson of managers committee. Whereas in his management role, Brian was developed, has developed and inspired a professional dedicated environment working team of employees while encouraging planning and productivity responsiveness to the residents and stakeholders needs. And whereas Brian has demonstrated great passion and energy and has positioned its town manager and is caring and compassionate, is a caring and compassionate leader. Now therefore, let a few resolve that I Jack Casey, Council Vice President on behalf of the Town Council, Town Staff and our community express our sincere appreciation of Brian O'Malley for his many accomplishments and contributions to the town.
I, you know, I've, this was a very, very tough decision for me as I, I stand here and bid farewell to McCandless. Um, I can't say enough about the Town Council, uh, the former council members, uh, the, the staff, our police department, our public works department that has been nothing but amazing and professional, uh, during my, my short term here, so, um. It, it, it was a extremely tough decision and we are, I, I know the great thing is because of the great people that are here. Uh, the great people that live here, the great people that are on council and the staff, the McCandless is in great hands. Um, you know, anything here that, uh, is, is on this list of things that I did, I did with the help of, of all the people on, of McCandless. And, uh, when I stood here and, and was offered this position and, and appointed manager a few years ago, uh, I talked about how great the people at McCandless are and I know that, uh, will, will continue to be so. Um, I can't say enough about how, about how good and McCandless has been to me. Um, and I, uh, I, I wish everyone the best and I will continue to, uh, pay close attention, continue to help in any way that I can, uh, from not too far away. So, thank you all.
Are there any public comments on any agenda item? That's right. You state your name and address.
Nine, six, three, five, Old Tumor Road, Allison Park, PA, one, five, one, oh, one. Um, I'm concerned about, um, new business, uh, letter, number eight, letter E about the motion for the sewer planning model. When I look at that on page thirty-three on what's posted online, it says that the plan is attached. I do not see the plan attached and I'm wondering if we could bring it up because sometimes I say that I don't see something. And then later on, somebody says, oh, it's there and you just didn't see it. And I wondered if we could put up the, uh, online agenda so that we can see it is not attached to the materials that were available to the public. Okay, so I'm making that request, you can't respond to me, but if that's possible, be so that someone later doesn't say that it was there and it is not in the online areas that are there. Um, I'm also kind of curious about the, um, posting that was done on June ninth, which was Sunday. And so I, it's very dedicated McCandless staff to be working on a Sunday to be posting the materials, not during the workday. Um, I've checked the board to see if perhaps these resolutions were there because sometimes I'm also told that they're on the board posted. And the only, um, resolution that's posted on the board is resolution number seven. Number eight and nine are not posted. So if somebody wants to check me on that now to see if that's correct, so that I'm not told later I didn't see it, but I've checked it multiple times. And if they're posted on Sunday, then that would, you can't get into the building until Monday morning. So that would not be twenty-four hours advance notice. So then if they're being posted on Friday on the board, why wouldn't they be posted online on Friday? Two. When? Those are my concerns about the posting of materials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Please state your name. Please state your name and address.
Kathy Alker, fifteen seventy-five Hedwig Drive, Allison Park, PA, one, five, one, oh, one. I'm here in regards to the furrow cats in my neighborhood. It's really, really, really getting bad. I've lived here for thirty-two years. The neighbors lived here for twenty-two. She has a furrow colony and she's like eighty years old now, so she's not really getting the cats neutered and like she did before. And it's real, she just put four new cats out from her house. Um, and even the neighborhoods, I can get a petition signed through the neighborhoods. It's really, you go outside and it smells, you go out your door and step into and, and it's just ridiculous. I don't know what else to do. We did have a hearing, she didn't show up. So I don't know why she gets away with doing that and not showing up for a hearing with, uh, Brunga magistrate. But the only thing I could think of doing is trying to see if someone else can help me. I did contact Patricia today. I see that she's not in town. That's probably why she didn't answer my email. But, um, to see if she can help me in any way because I'm in zone seven and that's, she's in charge of that. And I talked to Mike and told him I was coming tonight and he said, you know, do what you need to do, but we need to get rid of all these cats. I mean, the whole neighborhoods, they're even noticing the new ones. There was a house up the street where a cat had three kittens and put it up underneath the hood of the car. So they knew who to call. They knew who to call my neighbor Bev to see if she had the mother of these cats and they had to go up and open the hood and that and try to get these three kittens out. And then she said she was going to take them to main society. I don't think she did. I think they're in her house because there's four new ones out right now. They're black, they're thin, they're young and they have white legs for them. And I just don't know what to do and I can't even sit on my porch. You know, they come on my questions. The neighbor was going to come with me, but she's not feeling good care today, but, um, I just want to know what I can do about this other than her not showing up to the magistrate. I mean, if I did that, I'd probably be in big trouble. And, um, Mike said they're just going to find her fifty dollars. I mean, and she just had thirteen boxes of chewy delivered to her house today, yesterday and Saturday. So how many cats she has in the house? I have no idea. We used to be friends until it just seems like they're coming over. I just put all new mulch on my land and they're already coming over and crapping in it. And, and if they use it like a big litter box, I've tried spraying pneumonia and different things they say to do. But something has begun. These cats, someone's got to really check into this. Because like I said, I can get a petition from, I have people sign all the neighborhood on the whole street. Knows that this is a problem and across the street, there's an empty house. And the guy next to there is feeding the deer, the cat, she's definitely feeding the cats. But it's just like a zoo at the house. And like I said, I shouldn't have to not be able to sit on my porch and put my cushions out. They come over and sit on them and I got a bunch of pictures. And I just don't know where else to go. So I told Patricia, I texted, emailed her today. She could call me and see if she, she can help me work this out. I mean, it's unsanitary. It really is. In my yard, I pay six hundred dollars a year to treat my yard. And there's all yellow spots from when they come over and crap and they dig up the grass like they're in their litter box. And my husband's eighty-two and he is really, he's already my husband, been with him thirty-two years, Charles Toya. But, um, he's really getting fed up with the situation and I don't want, I have to referee between the two of them. We haven't talked to her in a while. But like I said, we used to be friends, but anymore, I mean, you go out the door, people come to visit me and say, what is that smell? I mean, we're polluted. I bet you we have these thirty cats outside and I don't know how many she has in her house. She fenced in the backyard to make it look like she's trying to do something about it. But there's no cats in the yard. They're all out and in her house as far as I know. So if we can get some help on this, I'd really appreciate it. Because I mean, it's not the cats' fault. People tell me, you know, take the cats and get rid of them. It's not their fault. It's her fault for feeding them. And like I said, thirteen boxes of chewy in two days, I got pictures of them, delivered her house and what is in there other than cat food now. So, and it's, it's like every week she gets that much, though. How many cats she's feeding in the house? I have no idea. But we need to get rid of the ones that are outside. And like I said, if she needs me to sign, people in the neighborhood, they all know, they know who to go to when they find three kittens. And they went straight to her. And I don't really think she got rid of the cats. She has cages now there in her house. She used to have dog sheds on kind of a porch for them to sleep in. It's, it's just a really bad situation that someone needs to do something about. I'd appreciate it if someone would.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Reports of committees, let's start with reports on public safety. Mr. Wall.
Well, can I make a motion to approve the previous?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Council minutes.
Put you back on. Please do.
So moved.
You have a second?
All seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. So move. Okay, now let's move to Joe Wall for the reports of.
Thank you very much. Um, Police Chief Ryan Hawk, Chief's report.
Good evening, folks. Try to keep this short and sweet. And I would first like to start by thanking Brian. It's been a privilege and honor working with you for this last couple of years or so. And, um, same, I now consider you a friend and a, and a valuable resource.
Thank you.
So I'd say I'd be bothering you at Richmond whenever I need something. Uh, as you folks, uh, have my report in front of you for the month, May, a couple of things I'd like to point out is, uh, you can see in May, myself and several of my command staff members were able to take advantage of some very valuable leadership training through the FBI uh, this past month at several different locations. Uh, I think that kind of training would be invaluable as we train up the leaders of today and hopefully, you know, tomorrow. Also in May, we began our firearms qualifications. That's an annual, uh, requirement of the entire police department. That'll continue through the summer as we can fit officers in at the firing range. Uh, we also started a hiring process in May. We had about thirty-five applications initially. We ended up testing twenty-three individuals, uh, after the physical agility, we, uh, administered the written exam to, to those twenty-three that passed the physical ability. Uh, I believe our personnel board started interviews this past Saturday. That's going to continue through the month, month of June. And, uh, they should give us a final ranking list, uh, whenever they complete those, hopefully by the end of the month. We also had, uh, unfortunately I was unable to make it. I was out of the area, but I think Mister Wall was there. Mock crash with, that, uh, was organized by Carson Corona, the junior council person. I think he should probably, um, get a round of applause for the work he did up there. In organizing the mock crash, uh, it's the first time we've had it since I think pre-COVID. And it was Carson's idea and we got, he got it off the ground and I heard it was a success by all accounts. Um, and I would probably end and take questions with, uh, mentioning that, uh, also in May, Officer Del Wall and Detective Sergeant Eggly participated in the Special Olympics torch run where they carry the torch from Pittsburgh to State College. And that was, uh, May twenty-first.
It's a long run.
It's a long run. Fortunately, they only had a few mile portion of it. If those two ran it the whole way, I might have to give them a day off or something. Any questions?
Any questions, Chief? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Jeff Wesner, Fire Marshal's report.
Evening all. Uh, I don't have anything to add to my report, um, just one comment, um, sort of kind of reiterate what Chief Hawk said. Just want to say thank you publicly to, uh, Brian for being a terrific manager supervisor to the Fire Marshal Office. Um, and I wish you all the best to that other town you're going to that I won't name. But, um, our sincerity, I mean, I don't have a proclamation to give you, so I can just give you my thanks and, uh, obviously offer my support for, you know, if you have any future questions, so that's all I have for this evening.
Same, thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Any questions with Fire Marshal? Thank you, Jeff. Uh, building permit report. Building permit report.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Jumping the gun there, Mister.
Building report was in your packet. Um, if you have any questions, let me know. I will do my best to answer them.
Liaison reports. Uh, that would be Personnel Board had no, uh, organized meeting. They did have uh, executive sessions to go over processes and procedures.
The volunteer firefighter steering committee had no meeting, uh, since the last meeting.
Mister Casey.
McCandless Franklin Park Ambulance Authority. Like to call out two things. One is they've adjusted the charts to make them more relatable. They had different values to them, so they were hard to really draw a good conclusion without really working at it. So now they're, they're equal and it'll make more sense when you read them. The other thing I would like to do is call out, uh, the efforts of Mister Keith Hall. Who spent a lot of time working with the command staff on a lot of different things, but they just have a, a brand new, a vision statement. And it reads as follows, MFPAA is the employer of choice in establishing new benchmarks in clinical excellence. And they'll review that on annual basis to, to keep it updated.
I'd like to add to that, too, with the national recognition for accreditation. We are one of two ambulance authorities in Western Pennsylvania that has that national accreditation. And I couldn't be prouder of you guys. They, they, it's been an impressive ride. I've been in office since January second. And I continually am impressed with what the ambulance authority is doing. Uh, public comment on public safety.
Hi, good evening. Marcia Caliendo, one oh five two nine, Abin Lane. Uh, I would like to thank the members of council who were able to attend our open house on, uh, the nineteenth of May. Uh, McCandless had a very great showing and even though I couldn't make it because I was sick, I certainly do appreciate, uh, everyone else, uh, who, who could, who could attend. Um, and I also want to give a personal shout out to Councilman Wall. Um, he took the time to send a personalized note to every employee of the ambulance authority congratulating them on our, uh, CAS national accreditation. Uh, and he also sent one to me. Uh, Joe, everyone, uh, was, was so thankful that you did that, was very thoughtful of you. And, uh, we are incredibly proud of, of our accomplishment and, uh, thank you so much for the recognition.
You should be proud.
So, thank you.
And you know what? The neds were deserved.
Yeah. And they were appreciated. Chief Dell said everyone was, was, was touched by it.
Thank you.
Excellent.
We'll turn that over to, to, uh, are there any?
One more.
I'm sorry. No, we just want to say thank you, Brian, for all your hard work, uh, not only for people's fire company, but for the fire service. Uh, we appreciate your work into the fire study and everything and just want to wish you the, the very best on your new adventures.
Thank you, thank you. And I'll also say we, you know, I, I mentioned our police department, our public works, the staff here. We have three, uh, very awesome volunteer fire departments and, and, you know, there's, we never say enough about the amount of hours that our firefighters put into us. So thank you for all you do and your leadership role there and all your, your members. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Are there any other public comments on public safety? With that, I'll turn it over to Mister Hart.
Um, reports on facilities management, uh, me, the staff report from, uh, Fred.
Is everybody? I don't have anything to add, but just a rundown, uh, for construction, put the new sidewalk on McCandless Drive. Uh, we did basin work on Wilderness Circle and Lake Marshall Drive. Uh, for our parks and buildings and grounds, we completed the playgrounded vestal.
Looks great, by the way.
No, thank you. Uh, brass cutting continues at all parks. Uh, we began painting Walpark and building the playground down there. Pond maintenance continues. We're focusing heavy on that. Paving program is completed. And the HVAC, uh, is completed here at town hall. That's all I got.
You also put the trees in.
Yeah, yes.
Fill site.
And I'll follow suit, buddy. Thank you, Brian. It's been great working with you. I'll surely miss you. Uh, but I'll be calling you while, with all sounds of questions, so.
I'll also repeat, it's been a pleasure working with you.
All I got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, liaison reports on environmental, uh, advisory committee.
Yeah, meeting minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know.
Um, ad hoc, uh, technology committee.
Was no meeting, although I do anticipate scheduling a meeting sometime in August.
And the ad hoc stormwater management committee, Mister Singer.
No meeting, but we'll have one scheduled shortly.
Yep. A public comment on facilities management. Seeing none, we'll move on to reports from service committee, Jack.
Okay. Liaison reports, McCandless Township Sanitary Authority. Minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to entertain them. That, I'll turn it over to Nick Giorgietti for the McCandless Public Collaborative Authority.
Meeting minutes are also in your packet and I'm here to answer questions and so is Irene, who knows more than me.
Very good.
Any public comments on service? Thank you very much. Any old business? No. Any new business?
Yes.
Yeah. I make, I, I make a motion to approve the Department of Public Works collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local six thirty-six as dated for a term ending April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed? Passes?
Can I just make a comment? Uh, was glad that we were able to finish this up, work well with, um, uh, the leadership over at Public Works. Uh, I think we, we struck a, a nice note of some, uh, modernization to the process and, uh, and taking care of our workers in, in an appropriate manner. So I was glad we could finish this up before I was heading out the door, so.
Well done. You did the police contract, too. Yeah. Okay, I'm looking for another motion for key.
This is simply a motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution seven of two thousand and twenty-four, amending resolution number one of two thousand and twenty-four by naming current signatories authorized to sign documents relative to the Town of McCandless defined, uh, benefit pension plans. And that is because Mister O'Malley is leaving.
We have a second?
All second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passed. Next motion, C.
Aye, make C.
Please.
Motion to adopt tentatively identified resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-four, authorizing the temporary investment of town funds by tax collector Judy Wagner to make transfers of said positive funds from into accounts only in the name of and owned by the Town of McCandless.
Do the second?
One question.
Okay.
Okay, with this resolution, the tax collector can only put monies into.
It really, it's just because I'm not the signator anymore, so it just gives another signing ability on our checking.
Guys, just wanted to say it publicly to make sure that everybody has an understanding.
Yeah.
I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? Motion D?
A motion to, uh, approve, uh, North Coast Council Government's sold contract.
Do the second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Not opposed? Motion passes, okay. Motion E.
I guess I'll make it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-four, the sewer planning module for the Bowler plant.
Do the second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Not opposed? Motion carries?
I just make a, a quick note and, uh, maybe Solicitor Cor will like to help me out with, uh, uh, sewer planning modules are something required by DEP. Um, they are essentially a, a process that, uh, we just have to, because we have a five thirty-seven sewer plan in place. Anytime that anybody gets added to the sewer system, it has to be approved by council, even though it's a pretty standard procedure. And, uh, and also we really lean on MTSA to make that determination. So this is mostly, th- this is essentially just a procedure that we have to follow. Nothing crazy is.
And this doesn't even prove this plan. This just.
I know, this is, this is just for sewage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It's absolutely correct.
Can I make a motion to approve the appointment of Jason Daly of Daly Operations Consulting LLC as interim town manager and agree with the terms outlined in the proposal submitted by Daly Operation Consulting LLC?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries? Are there any public non-agenda comments that anybody would like to make?
I'll make one. Council will hold a short executive session, uh, immediately following the meeting this evening to discuss, uh, pending litigation.
In here or in there?
Wherever you are.
In there.
We can do it here. We can do it here. We got this set up already.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then they don't have to.
There you go. Okay, that's fine. Have a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Second.
Thank you.